...mission to really hear from you as planning commissioners as to what you're looking at, what you're exploring, what you'd like to achieve in the next year, where you see issues and areas that you believe the council needs to focus on, and really just to get a discussion between our two groups as to, you know, how we can make the process better for our citizens and residents here in Santa Clara, and what are some of the challenges and opportunities we have coming up. And so, first of all, I want to actually talk to the audience for a moment because I know we already received a speaker card according to our city clerk. One of the items we had on our agenda this evening is the Moonlight Bowling Alley property. We are going to be continuing that item, subject to the council approval, to January 10th, and that was at the request of the applicant, the developer. So that will be the first item on our agenda, and so I wanted to just let anybody that's in the audience know that that item's going to be continued, subject to council approval at 7:00 PM. So, my name's Lisa Gilmore, I'm Mayor of Santa Clara. I'd like to go around the table and have everyone introduce themselves. Start to my right here, Vice Mayor.
Teresa O'Neil, Vice Mayor.
We can go around, just...
I am Rajiv Batra, I'm the acting city manager.
Good evening, Rajid Gaski, City Attorney.
I'm Matt Derron, I'm your city clerk now.
I'm Mike Halloran, planning commissioner.
Steve Kelly, planning commissioner.
Brandon Reinhardt, planning commissioner.
Raj Chahal, planning commissioner.
Andrew Crabtree, director of community development.
I'm Matt Goldschmidt, council.
There's always a wise guy here, always, yeah.
Debbie Davis, local council.
All right. And again, thank you for coming. So maybe, I don't know, who's the chair? Is there a chair of the planning commission? Steve, would you like to start, Steve, and let us know a little bit about what you're doing, what you're talking about, and what challenges and opportunities you see for your commission coming up in this upcoming year?
Well, the one thing, I would say that the most challenging thing, last couple of years since we've had to do the architectural review of every fourth bedroom, has been challenging, and I think the workload on Raj and Brandon and anybody that fills in has gone up dramatically. Typically, those meetings will go longer than the planning commission meetings. So, I would like to see if there's any way that we can give staff a little bit more oversight on that, so only the real questionable fourth bedrooms come in front of the architectural review committee. I think that would help a lot. Opportunities, God, there's so much going on in the city. I guess the one thing that comes to mind is anything on the El Camino, because we had the Prometheus project. If we have multiple lots, I think it is beneficial that both projects come at the same time, if it's in that same section. So, I know Prometheus, when they originally spoke to us on the Moonlight Lanes apartment complex, was looking at the development of the retail in front. I would have loved to seen both projects at the same time, so we can get a better idea of what their goal was for that section, and I would like to see that for any future projects that have large area along the El Camino, so when we see development opportunities, we see the complete picture. Thank you.
I think Vice Mayor and I had a discussion this morning with our city manager about the architectural review process and the fact that it's so cumbersome and so long, and there's so many items on it that are taking a tremendous amount of time. One of the things we were talking about this morning is maybe either somehow reconfiguring it with more staff involved, so exactly what you just said, something to be done to sort of ease the burden of that, but still make sure everybody has their due process when they have their applications. I know, Teresa, you have a mouthful of food right now, but now's the perfect time to call on you, to get your thoughts on that, because, and I think there's two planning commissioners, right? Who's currently serving? It's Raj and Mike. Okay. Sorry, Teresa.
Well, I think some of what maybe we need to do is, and I think some of the issue is, do we need to also to beef up the design guidelines? You know, we always come up against kind of the individual property rights versus the views of the neighborhood, and, you know, we continually are coming up against, like, you know, now we're getting, it's very typical that when people want to do a remodel of their house, houses are 3,600, 3,800, 4,000 square feet, next to houses that are, you know, maybe 1,200 square feet, and they may meet all of the, like, the setbacks and the lot percentage coverage and the FAR, but the other neighbors are still feeling that this is like impinging on their property rights. So that's where we kind of get into a lot of refereeing, and so I don't know if we want to, you know, talk about, do we need to change our guidelines, or look at other cities, or I'm not sure.
Yeah, go ahead.
Teresa, I know you're on the architectural committee, so you're seeing that, and I think maybe looking at the criteria might be a little different. The fourth bedroom by itself is not a problem, it's the size, the, you know, capacity, the footprint on the lot, and the impact on the neighbor, I think, is the key piece, and how you, how we in some way filter that in terms of what staff brings forward, I think, could be more efficient. You know, I think we're always going to have a little bit, because, you know, when you have the big development, you've got a professional designer coming in there and has already looked at all the issues, and where it's, you know, individual is not as much professional, you know, more like me bringing it forward, unless they've hired an architect or not. But I think that's exactly what I'm seeing, the same thing, obviously. You're getting late, and sometimes things are just an easy, yes, and sometimes they're a little more complicated, and it usually reverts to impact on the neighbors.
Yeah, and just to piggyback on that, a size guideline that says when it's over a certain square footage, say 1,800 square feet, triggers a review, so it's something that wouldn't have every fourth bedroom come in front of us, and if we had something like, we have a lot of people that want to have exterior entrances, and if we have guidelines that doesn't require every time they have a request for an exterior entrance to be something that the staff could look at first, that would also streamline it, so we would just have less projects to look at.
I think where we got into, if I could just piggyback on that, some issue, there were some issues a couple of years ago that neighbors felt like that some of those things were being missed by staff, and we had a couple of kind of blow-up examples, things that happened, and that's when the council kind of gave direction that the architecture review committee should look at every one, you know, so we have to kind of decide, you know, it used to be that staff was looking at those.
Yeah. What I'm saying is, it might be better when staff turns something down to allow somebody to appeal it, rather than to have it go directly to us, but that's where beefing up some of our design guidelines might make it simpler.
Raj, since you're currently sitting on it, do you have any comment?
So, I would like to go back a year or so, when this thing, like, anything above three bedroom and other stuff was brought to the architecture committee. I think one of the major reasons was to curb the boarding housing element of it. That was the main reason it was brought to ARC. And if you look at the experience we had last one year, I think that did not suffice, like, we did not achieve what we were trying to achieve going through ARC with this motive of, oh, anything above four bedroom and other stuff has to go through, and we will be able to curb the boarding housing in one way or the other. So, my idea is, council has to come up with a very clear guideline, what we are trying to achieve through this thing, how we want to control, if we at all want to control the boarding housing element of it, how we can do that, because this one is, I think it's still in a gray waters, like, anybody adding a fourth bedroom may be far away from the Santa Clara University or old quad, he has to come to the same hoops, and he's wasting his time, architecture committee members are wasting, sort of wasting their time, and ultimately it gets over. So, those guidelines have to be improved, and how we can protect individual property rights, that's important, along with what we are trying to curb when we are saying, okay, four bedroom, why are you doing this, fifth bedroom, why are you doing this thing? That's the other thing. The other thing we are facing is historic preservation, like, there have been so many elements, so many housing developments which came over here which had a strong opposition on the basis of historic preservation, because somebody is thinking, oh, their whole neighborhood is, has to be preserved with a particular houses type, whereas we do not have any guidelines as of today. I know that historic preservation ordinance is part of it, is with the state, is going under review and will have over here, but those are some of the issues we as architecture review committee are facing, because we do not have very clear guidelines, hey, where does this fall, how we, so I think we need to clarify those things. Council has to give a very clear guidelines, okay, how we control those things. That will make easy both for residents, as well as for ARC committee members, how to deal with this thing.
Sounds like there's too many gray areas that we need to make a little more clear. Dominic, did you have something?
Thank you, Mayor, and this is for any of you, and you, Andrew, we've seen a huge uptick at the council level with not-in-my-backyard development that's been supported by planning commission and recommended by you, and I know, I know we have to make tough decisions, we all do, but what can we do to minimize some of that just contention? Because we have a lot of things coming in the next six months to a year, including this project that'll be delayed till January, and it's just going to be contentious again, and I need some help on some tools, how to, you know, minimize some of this. So I'd love your thoughts on that.
Mayor, may I start the answer, and then Andrew can jump in? So, Councilor Kocerta, that's an excellent question. We struggle with the same thing. I mean, right now, we are following the general plan guidelines, which is approved by the council, the three phases. What we need to do is, in light of the recent developments that have been approved, that's my opinion, that we need to look at the first phase of that general plan, which concluded in 2015 theoretically, how we did, and what are the issues, so that we can amend or adapt for the second phase, which we are already in. So, we need to do that, now the timing is very critical, because projects keep coming along, so that's something we'll discuss with you, if not in a separate study session. We can do that in our off-site meeting that we are proposing now, or planning for the early part of next year. So, those were some of my initial thoughts, because we struggled with the same thing that you're asking. Andrew?
Well, and I think tying back to some of our earlier conversation about design guidelines or standards, we certainly could go out with the community in some sort of process of further developing the city's design criteria that are meant to address some of these, and they will, those tools are best for addressing the immediately adjacent neighbors and those kinds of impacts of, you know, someone in its backyard. You know, we're also hearing the conversations, not just Santa Clara, but a lot of the communities around us too, that, you know, with all the growth that's occurring, there's sort of a growth fatigue that's going on in the community, and I think that's perhaps addressed, as Rajiv was referencing, through sort of, you know, a revisiting of the whole general plan, and is are we still committed, and in what ways, to the vision that we have for redevelopment?
So, following up on that, I know the developers do multiple meetings. Is, are you recommending that staff do standalone meetings, separate of that, on top of what's going on now? I just feel there's something missing, and just add on, it's like, we get these reports that it'll have eight student impact in the school district, and a lot of people now just don't buy that, even if the school district is stamping it. I know that's a separate issue as well, but I just think faith in institutions in general are challenged right now, and if we can just find another way of adding on meetings, you know, standalone by staff, separate of the developers, I think that would serve us well.
And to maybe clarify or expand on what I said earlier too, that when we go out and do some kind of like engagement or policy activity around, like, you know, let's have guidelines, development standards, that tends to be very much staff-led, versus when we have, you know, a particular development project, which, you know, obviously, you know, the developer will be engaged at that point with their project, and so having that space can be helpful, that sort of separation between we're not, you know, there's not a particular project that we're here to talk about, but rather, we're here to talk about what our standards should be. Having that kind of conversation with the community can be helpful. And I think we also have to just recognize, at least, that, you know, we have what amounts to a fairly bold vision for El Camino Real in our general plan, that we're going to take these older centers and redevelop them, and that's going to create challenges, and there's no, you know, there's no magic design solution, given the depth of the lots and everything, and the council, I've seen you, you know, struggle with that too, but that's kind of the nature of change sometimes. That change isn't easy for folks, but, you know, we, at least in, you know, five years, six years in the past, sort of put ourselves on a road to, let's see change on El Camino Real. So, to the extent that we continue to hold to that vision, part of it may be helping folks see what that might look like, the benefits, what could be the positives that come out of that change, because, and people know what they have today, they're afraid of losing it, they don't necessarily know what they might get, and so to the degree that we can help people have that vision and see what could, that there could be benefits to it as well, that might help to address some of this.
I wanted to say, just following up on what Dominic said, is that we'll have developers, and this happens over and over again, they'll have community meetings with very little attendance at the community meetings, and then they'll come to planning commission, and there'll still be, you know, attendance, but not on a large scale, and then they come to us here on the council, and the chambers are packed, they're out the door, and they're, you know, carrying torches, they're, so they're so upset, and so I think that, I guess I'm just going to call it the old traditional style of engaging the community, doesn't seem to be working, it just doesn't. I think there has to be maybe more creative ways for us to engage, as, because we offer so many opportunities going through a process, you say, hey, you can come here, here, you can go with architecture, you can, all these different areas, but they're not taking advantage of those areas. They're coming to the council meetings, and by then, they're super angry, and the El Camino seems to be just the hotbed of anger right now, because what's happening on the El Camino is that, we all remember, well, at least many of us growing up in this area, the El Camino was commercial and retail, and now it's turning into all housing, and they see, our community sees retail shrinking and shrinking, and it's causing a lot of, Teresa's word, angst, yes, in the community because of it, and so I think that, you know, following up with Dominic, that we have to find better ways to outreach, to really get what the concerns are, so it's not just either a project or nothing, it's something in, you know, that will work for everyone, and we need to do a better job, so I'd like to hear everyone's comments on that.
Comments?
You guys just jump in, anybody.
Well, I would, I'd just like to add, four years ago, when I started on the planning commission, we kept being told by developers that we needed more housing to get more vibrant, upscale retail and restaurants. Now, the one place that I went to with actually Brandon and my son, was the Halford, that offered like 30 different microbrews, very trendy, and I think for a lot of residents, they've seen all the housing, but they haven't seen the benefits. I think a lot of people would feel better about all the growth on the El Camino if they actually received something, they got a more upscale shopping, more fine restaurants. I mean, it's nice to have a quick burger at Burger King or Jack in the Box, but there are a lot of restaurants that you see, like at Santana Row, and other newer developments that we just don't have. If we could get some of those into some of the retail portions that's being redeveloped, I think a lot of the residents would feel more comfortable with the housing, but if all they're seeing is just the housing and not the benefits of the housing, they're going to continue to be upset. So, I would like to see focus on the El Camino, at least in the next two years, to try to draw in some of the retail that we've been promised, because without that retail and, you know, more upscale trendy restaurants and places that we'd want to patronize, people are just going to say, we're just going to see more traffic, and that's the general feeling that I've been seeing from the letters that have been coming in front of us.
So, I'd like to jump in a little bit on that. So, I think there's so much to be done to really, you know, to move forward successfully, that it's almost a little daunting, and, you know, a lot of this probably should have been done five years ago, six years ago, when the general plan was adopted, you know, it was a phased plan, there were quite a number of things that were supposed to be done before we went to the second phase, I know the city manager and I, and the mayor have talked about this. So, I think there's a number of issues, like retail. So last week, at my request, one of the major developers in the area brought in a retail expert to talk to me, because I've been raising questions about retail, and I've been reading a lot of different things, and we're seeing, we're seeing that there is somewhat of a collapse of certain type of retail, and this, this retail expert, who's going to be working with us on one of our projects, told me that he thinks that the traditional department store, and he included Nordstrom's in this, is in a death spiral, that was his phrase, death spiral. So, I think there's lots of things that need to go on. I think we need to gather more data, we, I've been asking, and one of the things I'd like to see, I'd like to see us have some kind of symposium or panel, and bring in a number of developers and people that are in the retail business. One of the things people keep saying to me, Trader Joe's, Trader Joe's, Trader Joe's, any number of residents, developers, people on city staff have outreach to Trader Joe's for years, and they keep telling us they're not interested in locating in Santa Clara. I think it's, unfortunately, right now, it's, you know, we can ask for the retail, but if the companies don't think that they're going to get the money that they need, they're not going to do it. I mean, that's why they're closing Office Max, that's why they're closing a lot of these stores, they're not getting the margins that they need. You know, why is Macy's closing 100 stores? Macy's sold their Macy's Men's store in San Francisco. You know, so I think we need to, like, why is that happening? Where is retail going? You know, what kind of population base, or where, or what locations? You know, is it going to be that El Camino will just be, you know, one of the things that was said to me was, you've got retail spread all along miles of El Camino, do you need to look at clustering that better? You know, and one of the things that was said also, depending, you can have great retail, but if it's not the easiest to get in and out of these days, it's not going to do well, it's going to, you know, really suffer. So, you know, looking at those issues, I think we kind of need to step back, and, you know, Steve, some of what I hear you're saying, and Raj, and Mike, in terms of developing a vision of what we want, and an understanding of what's happening in the community, and there, I think we are struggling with being in a transition, and, you know, a lot of us who have lived here for a while, you know, it's almost like you think, well, gee, this valley is, you know, it's single-family homes and housing tracts, that's what's always been, that's what it's always going to be. We forget that that's only really been here, you know, like, for 40 or 50 years, and, you know, it was a different lifestyle before, is it, you know, are we going to a different way of life? And there are people, you know, as part of this process, I almost think that, you know, I know Kirk Vartan has mentioned Don Whedon, I've seen two or three of his presentations at different, in different contexts, there are other people, you know, we need to come in and have people talk about what do, you know, what do demographic experts see as the trend of what's going on with the population? I've also suggested that one of the things that we need to be doing some data gathering, we already have a number of projects that have opened, you know, maybe partnering with our developers, maybe partnering with the chamber, you know, let's go and look, for those housing projects that have already opened, you know, what's really happening there? Are they fully occupied? What's going on with parking? Because that's one of the other things that we hear all the time. You know, are they overparked, as they, you know, do they have surplus parking spaces? What's going on with actually evaluating the traffic? Because I know one of the things that was controversial about the project that we were going to hear tonight, the developer, and, you know, his position was that the housing project would actually generate less traffic than the bowling alley, and I think for most people in the community, that's almost like, you know, that leaves them incredulous. How could that possibly be? Because one of the things they're saying is the bowling alley has so little usage that, you know, it's, you know, the owner is not, you know, they're not getting any profits on that, so they want to sell it, because it's like one of the lowest-used bowling alleys in there across the country. So, you know, I think there's a number of things, data points, that we have to gather, and then together, try to develop a vision, I mean, because that's one of the comments I hear from you, what is the vision for what we want Santa Clara to be? And it's, it's not just El Camino, it's also, you know, all over the city. What, where do we see the city going, and particularly, you know, what's going to be happening on the north side of the city, or, you know, next to the Caltrain stations?
One of the things Vice Mayor has mentioned is that we need to look at design guidelines, we need to look at updating our general plan, and what are the conditions that will take us from phase one to phase two to phase three? We haven't had time, we've been hit with so much development, so many applications, we haven't had a moment to breathe, to even sit down and talk about these things, and that's what we want to take now, we want to take a moment to sit and talk to all of you, talk to the council, talk to the community, about what's our vision for what's coming next, because we just haven't had the opportunity. It's, everything has hit us in the last several years so fast and so hard.
Yeah, I think just exactly what you're saying is where we get slowed up, and I want to actually hear from council in terms of your expectations, but that's what I see is, the general plan is one of the biggest things we have, that my general feeling, and this is again a question for the council, is that if somebody comes in with a plan that fits the general plan, should I be, you know, I almost automatically say, well, that's the general plan, they made all the guidelines, and that was the vision, but I can see that, one of the things we said when we did 2010 general plan is that we don't want to put it on a shelf, but I think we do need to pull it off a little bit and see how we did in the first phase, and then relook at our vision, and I think that would help a lot, and I think maybe overcome some of the objections. But again, in there also, I'm trying to squeeze in, what is your expectation for us when somebody comes forward with something that isn't the general plan, but has opposition from the neighborhoods?
Okay, so my thing, comments on all of this, is we did massive development in the last three years, and like she said, we weren't breathing. We weren't taking time to do any kind of strategy analysis on a yearly basis, to see where we were, the impacts that were hitting us, and what was happening. So Lisa came up with this scarily brilliant idea of having this conversation with you so that we could get it. We've heard that there's not enough planning staff to handle what is being hit, it's like a barrage. One of the other things is, to what you said, when we have any development plan, we need to look at it from all different aspects. How is it fitting into the puzzle of the city of Santa Clara? Does it fit well? I think some of the things that have been happening, and just going through, I just went through right now with the reelection, the community is outraged because they feel they are not being heard, they feel that we are doing patchwork, stuff all over the place, and how is it going to impact what's going to happen? The other thing is, I'm hearing from you guys, is certain things have to be streamlined, so that when it comes to you, that you're able to digest it and say, this is going to work in this particular area. For us, when we get it, exactly what the mayor was saying, there are so many people that are not hearing community outreach, they're saying that two or three people people, and I've heard this from developers, oh, two or three people only showed up. How is that happening when we get letters, 20, 30 letters saying, don't approve this project?
They don't have time to come to a meeting.
Yeah.
We've got to do like online collaboration.
And they are like so upset with us. And we're like, okay. And then we go back and we might say to staff, you know, how did this happen? How did these people get missed? So, and then when they do come to council, they're angry. They're very angry. And they think that we're just rubber stamping everything and we're destroying their neighborhoods. We don't want that anymore. I would rather have major communication and to take a look at the general plan on a yearly basis or have those retreats with you guys. So we understand where development needs to be. And that's just housing, retail, whatever we need to have. And when we were talking about Trader Joe's, I know for a fact Trader Joe's put all of their stores on our 19 square miles of the borders. They're sitting within the range of our borders because when you go to a store, they ask you what's your zip code. And I was told by the people in San Jose and Coleman, that's where all our people go shopping. And now they're going to Sunnyvale because it's right on the corner there. They kind of moved it a little bit. So they look at retail heads to beds. How many people do we have? Is it going to service their stores? And people are shopping differently. As Teresa alluded to, the bigger retail stores our people are going in for online. I hate to online shop. I like to feel things. So, but to these people, it's cost effective. To us, we have these development projects. They're looking for the coffee shop. They're looking for the dry cleaner. They're looking for those amenities that get them quick. And then if they're going to go big shopping, they're going to go somewhere. But I just think in 19 square miles, we have to look at it. No more patchwork. We have to look at communication and we have to listen to the needs of the residents. Because there was a report today, three people are leaving California every day for one person that's moving into California. And it's all because of housing. And they're going. We are, they're droves. But it's the people that are the original Californians that are leaving to go somewhere else because they can't afford to live here anymore. They feel that they've lost what they've had and what they put their roots into. These are people that have been here 40, 50 years. And now they're decided when they're retiring, they're out. So that scares me that we are not allowing our people to live where they want to live because now they feel they have lost what they had a long time ago. I understand development and there's going to be change. But if we're not communicating this and we're not showing them that this is the wave of the future, because we're going to have children and grandchildren and whoever else, how are we going to address these issues? So I think the biggest thing we have to do is have these kind of meetings so that we can get where we need to be. So those are my comments.
I'd just like to piggyback off of that. As far as noticing and getting the word out on projects, I would like to see more outreach on social media and possibly on larger projects, asking the developer to have, you know, illustrations be put online where there's a link. So people that are worried about what's going to be there to be able to see something online, look at the renderings so they get a better idea of the project. But housing, you know, it's a huge issue. People, when they come to the planning commission, they keep saying, why are we building so much housing? And I tell them the statistics. So when I read like from, I guess it's about by the Women Council Realtors, that we're going to grow by 2.3 million by 2040. You know, that's a huge number. And I just asked the people that show up, I said, I understand your concern, but where are your kids going to live? If you want your kids to stay in the Bay Area or stay close to home, we need to provide housing. Putting some of that out there on social media is beneficial. So when they see information about housing projects and they say, why are we building housing projects? Referencing different articles would be beneficial because a lot of people now, including myself, I've gotten rid of the local Mercury News. I go on their website, but I no longer pull up in the paper when I want news from them. I go online. And that sort of statistic and seeing that information right there, right in front of you is important.
So, as mentioned earlier, like, I think we need to put our top priority on the general plan review. We have seen last three, four years, how the business environment is changing. Brick mortar versus online and what we can do about it. So that should be our top priority. Let's review our general plan and then come up with what options we have, skipping in our last two, three years' experience and going forward, what we can do. And that should be incorporated, that review should be incorporated, any future development. And one of the aspects of developers going to the community, I think we have to bring them very early on with the real plan. They have to present to the community real preview of what they're trying to do. Because we had a study session for Moonlight Bowling, not Moonlight, Loren Station. Even a week before, we were not presented what's coming over there. So think of it, a planning commissioner's study session was not presented even a week before, maybe a week or 10 days before. We were not presented what will be coming to us in a week. So that's, I think we are lacking in. Community involvement, it, I don't know, like, we have to find a way. If council members or mayor has to go to the community to engage the community for a particular project, I think we should do that. If we all can attract, like, I know Councilmember Teresa O'Neill holds a monthly meetings every month, that is one thing and giving a overview of, and hold it within the community. Go to a community directly over there and let's come up with a plan, what's coming up in your neighborhood, what's coming up over here. So, and one other thing I'm thinking of is, some of these plans, we are coming up with general plan amendments for these developments. So whenever we have a general plan amendment, I think that has to be very, very elaborately discussed in the community. Like, if a general plan amendment is being done with a notice of seven days, I think that's not right. Because general plan is something which the whole community is treating as a sacred document, going forward what's going on. And if you're trying to change that within a week or 10 days, that's not a good aspect of it. General, any development where there is general plan amendment, take a wider scope, not only notify within 300 or 500 yards, notify it in a much wider area of the community. So that everybody, because general plan amendment reflects whole city sort of, whole community sort of. So those amendments, anything, general plan amendments are widely circulated and take opinion of the residents before we bring that general plan amendment into a project. So this must. And I know we have grown so much in last two, three years. So it's time to see where the balance should be. The balance between the development and the single family, not in my backyard sort of thing. We have some very good examples where we have learned like, okay, what's happening? Where the residents are coming back or residents are pointing out what's wrong with these plans. So I think staff should also see what has gone wrong on those plans. So even before they present anything to planning commissioners, we should incorporate those historical feedback from the community. This was not working out. So we had to change it. So staff should stop it at a very first stop. Okay, this is what happened in the last project. We will not do it. So those are some of the aspects on this. I'm not sure we are talking about any other topic I can throw in over there. Like, we need, as a planning commissioner, we need a real clear policy on affordable housing. Because I know sometimes we throw it to the developer, developer says, you don't have a policy. We already bought the lot for X amount of dollars. Had there been a policy, we would have made a different deal with that lot. And we cannot ask them to do anything without a policy. So that's one thing, like, we need to have an affordable housing policy where we can hold them responsible. Hey, we need this thing. We need this amount of, we need the Nexus study to be done. ASAP, if we can get that thing done, that would be so good so that we are able to substantiate why we need affordable housing, why we can ask for it. And then definition of level of affordability, how we are, like, what do you call it, moderate, low income, very low income, how we want to define those. So those are the policy matters. And the next policy matter would be the TDM, traffic demand management penalties. Our city is one of the cities, we do not have any TDM penalties. The developers come, they give us a plan and we don't know what will happen in a year. Even if they don't suffice the requirements and they are not able to achieve the targets they are, we are not holding them responsible. We cannot do anything. They come up, oh, we could not do this. Now we'll change it. We'll modify this and we'll come up with something. If we have penalties, that will hold them responsible to a large extent. Because our residents are facing a lot of traffic issues and all these issues. So these are some of the other issues which, as a planning commissioner, because our report goes to you, basically. If we can control that to some extent at our stage because of these policies, it will be much easier for council to, hey, you heard this in planning commission, why you are asking this again and again for that thing. So we are the first link between the residents and the staff for that matter, for these developments. So we need those clear policy guidelines. If we can get those policy guidelines from council, that would be great.
Just one more thing regarding the general plan. We have had discussions that when we do get big projects, we think it would be beneficial to trigger like a spot review of a general area, like city places going in. Since it's such a large project, it would be beneficial to do a spot review of that general area. Maybe not the whole general plan per se, but if we could do just a spot review when we have a really big project would be beneficial. Thank you.
We need to get the area-specific plans done, too.
Okay, so I'm just going to talk about just a few things that everyone's talked about. And then I know we have a couple of public members that want to speak or give us some comments as well. I know, the idea has been brought up about the general plan over and over. And I think that we need to do the phase review of the general plan. And I think it would be advantageous for the council to do it with the planning commission. If we had a special session of a study session or a working day, if we can work together, a working day, which makes even more sense for something, you know, as large as this. If we can plan that, because I think your expertise would be really helpful for us. You're, again, you're the first line of, between the residents and the city. They come to you first. So I think it would be helpful. And I know Vice Mayor O'Neill's been asking for that for a long time. So if we could coordinate that with you, if you're interested, we'd really like to do that with the planning commission. I like the idea of the, you know, the online illustrations when there's a project. And I know Councilmember Davis even talked about, and I think San Jose does this to a certain extent. They put the pictures actually on site with the boards of how the project's going to look. And they put them right on site with the specifics of the project, who the developer is and contact information if there's questions. Because a lot of times, you know, neighbors walking their dogs or just looking at it will have an opportunity to see, uh-oh, something's coming here. And this is what it's going to look like. And if I have questions, these are the people that I contact. So both the online illustrations and the on-site illustrations. Talked about the Nexus study. I don't know where that is. We've been talking about that forever. I think we actually spent some money on a Nexus study that's somewhere, I don't know where it is. We'll need to really firm that up because we've been talking about it. But in the meantime, we've asked for these discretionary approvals for affordable housing, discretionary or voluntary, but they're not quite voluntary, but voluntary. You know, 10% is sort of what we've been, what we've been working on. But I think to have an actual policy in place is really going to protect us more and at least give us, you know, another level of protection that we're getting some affordable housing as these projects go forward. Using social media is fantastic. I know Jennifer Yamaguma, our public information officer, uses it for a lot of things. But if we can also use it more effectively for projects that come before us, for the planning commission and really educate the community on what's coming and what's coming to the council. Because she's on Nextdoor and Facebook and E-Notify and, you know, as many places as we can get it out. I think we have to, again, get more creative on our outreach. We also have some TDM accountability. We talked about that. We can incorporate that somehow, some kind of structure or infrastructure to allow us to make sure we're following through. Because that's always the problem. You approve these projects and I don't know what the follow-through is at some point. So we get some accountability from the planning department and, you know, others as to where do these projects go and what happens after they're built? And did they meet all the expectations and the conditions of approval that were there? One other thing we had last night, we had a neighborhood university relations committee meeting and we're talking about this neighborhood protection ordinance, which I think is, it's going to be a big citywide discussion on this neighborhood protection ordinance and what is a boarding house, what isn't a boarding house. Because we're not just looking at the university area, but citywide. We have a lot of these problems that are facing, our residents are facing around the university. There's other areas of town that are facing these same issues and problems because of the price of rental housing. Many people are packing people into homes, which, you know, will have 10 cars for a single-family home or some of these other issues we're working on. So be advised that this ordinance, it's taking some kind of shape now, but it's going to come, we're going to really advertise this to everyone, the Chamber of Commerce, you know, everyone out there, planning department, planning commission, neighborhoods, to get feedback on it. So it's sort of our next biggest thing that's coming forward. So we just wanted to let you know about that. And so if we could set up our maybe working session with the planning department, planning commission, council, is that, and then we could do that and...
We get a couple of people to, because I think we need to spend some time, you know, maybe a subcommittee or, yeah, work on what is it that, you know, we want to do at that session, you know, with the time, you know, you get it very well planned before the council and the planning commissioners.
Yes, and maybe we can ask for representation from the planning commission, too, to help us craft that agenda. Andrew?
When I heard earlier some suggestion or question about having speakers, which would, my mind sort of lead to multiple sessions, if you want to have like a, you know, retail panel or something that could kind of lead up to. So I was kind of getting the earlier feeling it was a little bit more an extended multi-meeting session on the general plan.
We'd like that. And Teresa talked about the retail experts. I personally heard the Don Whedon presentation. I found that fascinating. I'd like that to come to the council.
Well, he's free, so he's easy to...
I like him. He's free. It's, I learned so much from that. It's fascinating about what's happening in our, in our areas. So yes, we can get experts to come and talk to us and educate us about what's happening so we can plan. Because if we don't have that information, it's hard to, you know, see the trends in the future of what's happening. I'm talking way too much. I wanted to, Brandon, go ahead.
So I was waiting for the right time to say this.
Yes, now it is.
It's a little bit of a pivot from everything else, but it is related. We talked about how the past three years have been just really intense. And there's been a lot coming down the pike and it's hard to stay ahead of that. Fortunately, we have a full committed planning staff and our general plan, a lot of fourth thought goes into those. And, you know, I think one gaping hole that the city is majorly lacking in, from my perspective, is Sunnyvale and Cupertino and Fremont all have sustainability commissions and sustainability officers as part of their city staff. And I think that it's, we have the climate action plan that's integrated into our general plan. But I think the difference between a general plan and climate action plans and sustainability measures is they're largely dictated by technology. And I think we live in a place where we're smart enough to know how quickly those things change. And I don't think we are able to stay ahead of it, just given all the volume that's coming at us. I mean, it's hard for you and for the planning commission to do just their, their own jobs, let alone have a dedicated staff or commission just sort of monitoring those issues. And like I said, on top of that, it's just changing so quickly that it's like we need, in my opinion, we need to have dedicated people to making sure that this stuff is happening. Because we come up in meetings and, you know, we want to implement some measures that, from what we, from our perspective, they're way behind the times and they're only a few years old. But it's difficult for us to put that, you know, onus on a developer when they, you know, it is true, they know the rules, they're pricing land based on what they're able to build and what the rules are. So if we're changing building code measures and stuff on them on the fly, that doesn't really work. So we need to have someone who's sort of taking care of that on the front end so that we can stay ahead of the curve.
Very good points. Thank you. Very good points, thank you. Raj, anyone else, and then we want to, I have a few cards here, I want to go, you want to hear from the public first, then we can kind of wrap it up at the end?
Sure.
Okay, Hassan Hagag, please come forward.
I got three points that I want to talk about. The first one is about the policies that you guys were talking about very early on, and I want to second what Raj said, and just the example that you guys were talking about with the four-bedroom, right? It's very important with any of these policies that both the Commission and council always look back at the objective of what that policy was put in for. You know, the four-bedroom thing is, blindly applying it is a waste of everybody's time. And by going back and looking at what the spirit of, you know, implementing that policy was to begin with, rather than just blindly following the letter of what's written, is really what I think makes those policies a lot more effective, and can allow us to modify those policies as we go along. Second point I want to talk about with regards to community outreach. You know, the reason, and I'm telling you this as a community member, the reason nobody shows up to these Planning Commission meetings, or Architectural Review meetings, or even the meetings with the developers, is because everybody feels, I mean, the community feels that these meetings are simply a formality, and by attending these meetings, it's really a waste of time. And if I want to more effectively use my time as a member of the public, I'm gonna come to where the decision is made, and that's the council meeting, right? All of these meetings, with all due respect to the Commission, and even the developer meetings ahead of time, they're not decisions, they're recommendations, and they can be changed, and the community has seen these recommendations changed time and time again by council. So why even waste my time by going to a Commission meeting or to these, you know, developer relations meetings, when I can just come to council, because the council's gonna make up their own mind anyways? So why would I waste my time going to the other ones? With all respect, I mean, you guys probably get frustrated just the same, you know? You spend all this time debating and following and going through all of these decisions and rigorous analysis, and then it comes to council, and then they decide to do something different than what you recommended, which is within their purview. But as a community member, why should I come and waste my time? The other thing is, you know, it's foolish to assume that people will come to us in these meetings. We need to find creative ways to reach out to the community. And then the last, the last thing with regards to getting bogged down with all that list of applications, and you guys have just been so busy the last few years, nothing says that you guys have an obligation to respond by an application or come to a conclusion with an application within a designated certain amount of time. So if there is, if there is a whole lot of applications coming down the pike, then, you know, they just take a number and get in line. And at the front of that line needs to be a revision of the general plan. So I think it's really important that we, you know, we don't ever feel rushed by any developer to do what's right for our city. Sorry for going over.
Good evening. I heard some great things tonight. First was, well, a number of things, the acknowledgement of the change that we're all facing and the frustrations, I think that's something that I think everybody feels on a daily basis. But hearing about the need for additional types of community engagement, the affordability discussion that we just had, it brings me back to thinking about what I saw about what New York's going through, and I know we don't like to compare ourselves to other cities, but when San Jose says that they are now the most expensive place to buy a house for a million price of a house, over San Francisco, and it's now more than New York City, we need to at least acknowledge that we are in a very unique space, and how do we address that with techniques that larger cities, unlike us here, have, and what can we do to help ease some of those pressures? One of the things that New York is doing, I believe, I think they have 20 or 5 or 30% requirement for affordable housing. I think we should raise our bar a little bit higher than 10%, which is, I think, accepted practice, but we're not normal here, and I don't think we should just do the minimums here. And lastly, with engaging the community in new ways to reach out to the community, part of it has to do with the objective on having the meetings, like Hassan was mentioning. If it's just considered a formality, I went to my two developer meetings, the developer checked the box, yep, had those, had this outreach, it doesn't really affect change, and it doesn't have an engaged community base. Looking at how to engage the community early on in the process is critical to get buy-in, and I hope that places, things like doing placemaking and engaging organizations that specialize in this, like Project for Public Spaces, they do this for a living, that's what they do, and they make great places and make great cities. So I hope we can, we can really look at that as a strategy. Thank you.
Susan Hinton, please come forward. Welcome, Susan.
I don't think we need to look to New York for good comparison.
Microphone. Oh, sorry, or you have a seat if you'd like, if it's easier.
That's okay, I can stand up. I think we don't need to look to a giant city, or San Francisco, or New York. I can get in my car and go to some great urban, well, suburban urban places nearby. Castro Street in Mountain View, for God's sakes, just walk down the bloody street, you see what people want, and within blocks of Castro Street, there's mixed housing. There are very tiny little efficiency houses, I'm assuming those are less expensive. There are some big houses with lots of land around them. Downtown, for God's sakes. This is not rocket science. You can go to Campbell, Campbell is a great downtown. I don't like it as much as Mountain View, but it's very thriving, and it'd be a great place to go study. Or you could go upscale slightly and go to University City, University Avenue, excuse me, in Palo Alto. You don't have to really dig hard to find great places. Now, San Francisco is nicer, but San Francisco is bigger. You don't need to go bigger. When it comes to meetings, I worked in the tech industry for more than 20 years. I didn't have time to do any of this, now I'm retired, so here I am. Does that mean I want to come to meetings? No, I have plenty of other things to do. But it's important. I think if you move more stuff online, you could even do, I don't know, I imagine you could do a Skype conference. You could do all sorts of things. You just need to reach out to the technical people in your own community and ask for help. You could probably go to the companies. I bet that they would have some folks that would have some time, that they would donate to help out. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you for those ideas, appreciate it. Chuck Brown, if you'd like to come forward. Welcome, Mr. Brown.
Thank you. My name's Chuck Brown, and I'm a resident of Santa Clara for 45 years, and I have a number of things to state, but first of all, I've heard a lot of good things here tonight. But one of the things I heard was, there's nobody that shows up at a Planning Commission meeting that's from the public. In my 45 years, I have never once heard of a meeting anywhere about the Planning Commission. Okay, just food for thought there. And I think, I've heard a lot of problems here tonight and how to solve them, but I think it starts with an attitude. The attitude of Santa Clara. What is our attitude for the future? I don't understand why we feel like we have to be a dormitory for the electronic companies. Now, I'd like to see affordable housing here, especially for my grandkids, but unless they're an engineer, realistically, they're never gonna be able to buy a house here. And I talked with the incoming city manager, and he stated that since we are at the heart of Silicon Valley, we have to be accommodating to the electronic companies. I beg to differ. Electronic companies wants us to build these high-density projects so they can tell their prospective employees, "Come work for us, there's housing nearby." Okay, I don't, I don't see any responsibility there. And the, let me see here, get me to my spot. The high-mass, high-density projects that have been built so far, okay? I just wonder where the Planning Commission was when some of these projects got put through. That god-awful thing across from Central Park, that looks like it could have came from Czechoslovakia in 1985. That's terrible. Okay, I'll move on here. A pleasing design standpoint is what's missing, what I've seen so far on these high-density projects. So, you know, and the thing is, as we pointed out, these shopping centers are going away. You guys have already voted to, or committed to take our golf course away, now the bowling alley, for whatever reason. So what's gonna be the opportunities for recreation for our young people? To keep them occupied and make it fun for them to live here? And the quality of life is what I'm most concerned with about, is that we're gonna bring all these people in, no place to park. If you take a look down there at that Lawrence and Monroe, parking right now is kind of overwhelming just with the workers that are there. When you get all these thousands of people that are gonna be there, man, that's gonna be an intersection that I'm going to avoid.
Thank you, Mr. Brown, if you can just wrap up your...
Closing statement.
Your statements.
Sure. I would personally, I would like to see a more forum on any further high-density projects. You guys overwork because you're doing all this stuff, put a stop to it. Take it as one other suggestion we had here. Put a line in, and the other thing that would happen is, I know in retail standpoint, I used to be advisor for retail stores and stuff, they could complain about they have too much business. There's an easy way of controlling that. You raise your prices. A developer who wants to come in, get them to raise their prices for doing that. Make that, make them, put in a new park. Let's have some open space. Anyway.
Thank you, very good ideas, thank you.
Okay.
Thank you for coming.
You're welcome.
I just wanted to say the Planning Commission is now streamed live, correct? We're streaming live. It started in July, so if you'd like to watch the Planning Commission in action, we do livestream the Planning Commission meetings since this last July. So I know that people are tuning in now to watch the Planning Commission, you know, more on a regular basis, and I think we need to advertise that a little bit more, so that the public can see that. So we've had some very good ideas, I really like the ideas of maybe Skyping our meeting.
If I could add something. As a result of the calls that we did during the election cycle, a neighbor actually reached out to me that worked at Cisco and said that Cisco offers webinars to local governments at discounted prices. So I thought, okay, might be something we might want to look into, especially Mrs. Hinton brought up that idea, it's a very good idea. So we'll follow up with that.
Okay, is there anyone, Councilmember Colston?
Thanks, Mayor. Two people right at the beginning of this meeting said things that really, I think, were spot-on. The mayor talked about how that the developers can do community outreach, try to have meetings, the Planning Commission and the planning staff can review all of these projects that are in the pipeline, but it seems that, like the mayor said, everybody shows up at the city council meeting to say, "We don't like what the Planning Commission did, we don't agree with staff, we don't like the developer." And I think she indicated she wanted to front-load the process. She wanted the Planning Commission and the planning staff to be the problem solvers on this, that when a project gets to the council, it's pretty much agreed to by everybody. The developer, the neighbors, everybody. I think that makes a lot of sense. Steve mentioned Architectural Review, and how labor-intensive it is, how time-consuming it is, and occasionally, we have applicants that wind up at the city council saying, "I don't like the way they made me design my house, I want you all to redo it." And the mayor mentioned she wanted to front-load that, to keep it with the Planning Commission and the planning staff. And then Hassan mentioned that he thought people didn't want to bother with the Planning Commission or the planning staff, they would just wait for the big casino and come into the council and get things changed. And I think a Pin Brothers, that development on the Al Camino there, 1890, I think, Al Camino it was, and, boy, the Pin Brothers did a lot of outreach, the planning staff had community meetings, you all had Planning Commission meetings to deliberate over that project, but they still wound up with these guys to try and make the final decision. And I think they crafted a good compromise that everybody liked. But then O'Neill mentioned that we ought to pick a couple of things that we can get big wins at, and I think working to streamline this process, so the Planning Commissioners and the planning staff do most of the work, carry most of the water on these issues, is a real good one to start with, and working on the Architectural Review Committee and how that process happens is another good one. And the way to do it is what you said, have a joint meeting, brainstorm those two issues. This is kind of what O'Neill's done with her Governance Committee, she's got some pretty good successes going forward, grabbing the low-hanging fruit, and I think those two ideas are good ones to take on for our first meeting, so that's what I suggest we do.
Okay. All right. Steve, your commissioners?
You know, when I go to the city website, just to find the agenda sometimes, or to get on an email list of upcoming projects, it might be better just to have a very direct place at the main page to click on projects upcoming in front of the city, where somebody can click on that, and then from there can get on a email follow-up of what's going on, when it's going to Planning Commission, Architectural Review, to council, to hopefully increase the number of people that are showing up to the meetings, because I've seen other websites with other cities where it is simpler to find what you're looking to find out about. And since building in the city has been such an issue, if we can put it right there on the main page with one or two clicks to find what you need as far as upcoming products, and then they can just click if they want to receive emails and notices of upcoming events, that would hopefully increase the number of people coming to our meetings. Any comments?
I know we made some list before coming to this meeting, and I'll just recap a couple of those other points, so that it's in your view. One thing we discussed was the speed of development projects and desired to review time. We, as a Planning Commissioner, and probably you as a council, needs more time to review those bigger projects, so I think we, as a Planning Commission, need a little bit more time. So if staff can give us some heads up way before, so that we can review those projects, that would be nice, one thing. And the other thing is, sometimes, as a Planning Commissioner, we are dwelling into the policymaking aspects of a particular decision-making, like more EV charging stations requirement for a particular development, whereas we are not supposed to, because we did not make a policy on that. So, again, the policy matter of that, where we fall, like, when can Planning Commissioners ask for these things, although they are not policymakers? So that clarification and the guidance from the staff, or guidance from the council to the staff about those aspects would be really helpful. The other thing is, a lot of developments are coming under planned development zoning, which the residents don't like it, we don't like it, and that, again, brings up to a point, like, we need to update our zoning, our general plan guidelines, so that we don't have to take that route of planned development zoning, which is not appropriate for doing that. And one other aspect, we had a recent meeting with the Planning Department, where some other cities do consider about the fiscal aspects of a particular project while they are presenting to Planning Commission, whereas we do not. So we need some guidance, like, for any development, when we ask the developer, "Hey, can you reduce two units on the back, so that we can make sure the privacy of the single-family houses is protected and other stuff?", they right away say, "Okay, this is not financially feasible." So how that can be balanced out, so that we, as a Planning Commissioner, can ask those questions? How, why can't, if we are giving you the maximum density of, like, 24, 38, they take 38 dwelling units density, and still say, "If we reduce by two units, it's not financially..." 38 dwelling units density, and still say, "If we reduce by two units, it's not financially feasible." So that aspect has to be brought into the staff reports so that we can challenge them, "Hey, no, this is not right. We are giving you the maximum density. We are giving you parking leeway, some parking benefits. Why can't you reduce that to make sure we, this thing fits into the neighborhood?" So we need some clear guidance on that. The staff would need some clear guidance. Some other cities are doing that at a planning commission level. We don't, so we need some guidance on that, whether that's doable or not. The one other aspect of involvement, like I know there were some good ideas from the residents, I think wherever we have a good neighborhood associations, Old Quad, SOFNA, we had a very good input into the projects at the, from the very first go. So I think we need to, whatever way it takes, we need to activate these neighborhood associations. And if we, if one particular neighbor doesn't have it, whether we have a neighborhood night out, we can have multiple night outs, go there, council goes there and it helps it out to organize the local residents, or make the organizations, neighborhood associations. Because that will build up a leadership level within the organization, within the neighborhoods to get involved into these aspects. So those are my thoughts. Thank you.
Those are very good thoughts. And I think you're talking about clear, I think overall, clearer line of communication between the city council and the planning commission when it comes to policy guidelines, whether they be design guidelines, general plan guidelines, any of those types of things. I know it's more difficult for you to do your job when you don't know, we haven't given you any guidelines to follow to, you know, when you're deliberating, you know, and you're considering projects. So I think we need to change that and work together better. So I think we're going to have to have this meeting come to an end because we have a close session before our council meeting. But I do want to say our next steps are to come together now and work on our joint, you know, meeting or meetings, as we talked about. Because I think we have so much to talk about and so much to work on. And, and I know as, you know, we've all just been through an election cycle, some of us were running, some of us weren't, some of us felt like we were running, but it's really, really clear in our community that the work that we're doing is really at the top priority of our residents. They really want us to get it right. They want us to improve it and they want to, they want to make sure that we're, you know, working together. And I think we have to do this now. And so we'll work with our staff, work with you, work with your staff, and, you know, get at least the planning part of this going and get something on calendar, at least a couple of times on calendar right away, so that we can start working on at least the general plan aspect of this, if it's okay with you, and, and get going in that direction. But if we can get, you know, a day that we can actually spend, you know, many hours working on it and preparing for it, then, then I think it'll work. Is there anything else from the council? Anyone? Any final comments? Steve, any final comments?
For anybody that would like to come, I'm also on the commission for the urban village for Stevens Creek. We would love to have insight from other Santa Claras residents because for those of us who live on the border, I live on the border with both Cupertino and San Jose, those projects affect a lot of Santa Clarins and they are actually looking for more feedback from us on those projects. Thank you.
Okay. All right. Well, I want to thank our staff and everyone that was involved in putting this together and thank the planning commission for meeting with us. And well, somebody said you're overworked. We're going to overwork you a little bit more. So thank, thank you very much for joining us this evening. Thank you to the public who came out to join us as well.